This is a historic moment in the history of Cameron County. I know many great men and women have passed through these chambers. But no one will be more remembered, more loved and respected than our brother Pete Benavides. Maybe this will be the last public tribute. But I would like for a moment of silence on behalf of our brother Pete. Thank you. Lord, we pray today for many worthy items. Tonight, many young people throughout Cameron County will be walking the highways, the byways, the streets, the avenues. And I would pray, Lord, that you would give them good judgment and safety. Have angels of mercy and goodness to surround these young people as they walk our neighborhoods. We pray today also for this building, this square block here on Monroe Street. For the safety, precaution, good judgment to come down over this building, not just from the past, but for our future. We pray that between now and next Tuesday evening, that there will be a record turnout of voters here in Cameron County, voting for those that they know in their heart will do the best job possible for all of the people. We pray continually for our servicemen and women, serving our nation, our state, our county around the world. We pray for our county health department. We're approaching this always guessable flu season. We pray that the vaccines will be a great help, but, Lord, we need your help to prevail over this season and time of the year. Let it be truly a rejoiceful time, your time, of giving gladness and happiness to those, particularly the aged, here in Cameron County. We pray also for our tax department. We pray that those that have properties, the luxury of having properties here in Cameron County, will come forth and take advantage of paying their property taxes, not just on time, but in advance, so that the budgeting of Cameron County will not be affected any way but positively, to do the best for our people. We pray finally for today's first agenda here in this wonderful refurbished building. And we pray that this agenda will be a doormat of agendas to come, to help all of us in Cameron County. In Jesus's name I pray, amen.
Amen. Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Sophie, good morning. It's an occasion where we feel a certain sense of excitement about having to start our first meeting here today. And a great deal of pride as well for this beautiful building and the restoration process There is a great sense of pride over what we've done and what this building now represents for the people of not just Cameron County, but the Rio Grande Valley. But there's also a deep sense of sadness that we all feel because our friend is not with us today. But what we do also feel, though, is that I'm very fortunate to have had him in our presence for so many years, to have learned from him, to have gained his strength, and to gain, more than anything else, his compassion. He is someone, I think, that was a good teacher, more than anything else. And he is not with us in body, but there is no question in my mind that he is with us in spirit. His presence here looms in a very big way, and it is something that we want to ask God to continue to have with us from here on out because he is someone, he was someone that had such a deep compassion for people that it is something that we, as public servants, need to continue to follow as we serve the public in the future and never forget that first and foremost, as public servants, we need to think with our heart because that's what God expects of us. Sophie, would you like to say something?
Good morning. I'm the Ruben Inojosa. Good morning, Solomon, and again, welcome to your courthouse. And again, beforehand, let me say we want to thank the Congressman for his outstanding work on behalf of the citizens of Cameron County. We know that he's fighting for us every day. He has garnered a great deal of respect in Washington, and we are praying every day that on November 7th, he will wake up, November 8th, he will wake up in the morning, and there will be a new majority in Congress that will provide him a leadership position that will ensure a stronger, even stronger representation in Washington for the people of South Texas. And I know that if anybody is up to the task of taking that leadership role, it's him. So, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Judge. From your lips to God's ears is what we certainly hope for, for that outcome. Part of my three minutes I want to use to say congratulations to you, Judge, and the Commissioners' Court for this fabulous asset that you have created for the city and for Cameron County. This building is an absolute jewel, and many, many around the state should come and visit this place because you've done an outstanding job. The purpose of my visit this morning has to do, actually, with something that was mentioned in the invocation. I noticed the invocation included a reference to the elections next Tuesday, that we hope a lot of people come out to vote, that we hope that the elections are clear and transparent and they are smooth. It's toward that end that I wanted to address a concern that has come out of the elections this year, and it is something that affects both Cameron County and Idalgo County, and actually other counties that were affected by the redistricting that happened this past summer. In short, the redistricting created new districts. The new districts created new ballots. The ballot that you face in Cameron County, if you live in the parts of Cameron County that Congressman Inojosa represents, which is District 15, and that is areas of Harlingen, LaFeria, Santa Rosa, Primera, Combs, Palm Valley, Commissioner Tomayo and Commissioner Garza are affected principally, if you are a voter living in those areas, you will face a ballot that has two categories that you must mark. You must mark your choice for Congress under a special election, then you must mark your choices under a general election, which is what's a typical category for an election. If you live in Brownsville, you do not face that problem because Congressman Ortiz's district was not affected by redistricting. So there, you will face a typical ballot where you will face just one category of general election, and under that category, you can vote straight ticket, all Republican, all Democrat, all Libertarian. The problem is that those individuals in those parts of Cameron County that are represented by Congressman Ruben Inojosa, if you intend to vote for Congressman Inojosa or his opponents, but you fail to mark the special election section, your vote will not count. And this is based on specific instances that have happened since early voting started, where individuals walk away voting straight ticket, walk away happily thinking that they voted for their congressional candidate. That did not happen if they did not mark the special election. Incidentally, Idalgo County has the same problem. They actually have three categories of elections. They have three elections. If you live in the drainage district in Idalgo County, you must vote for a special election for your choice for Congress, you must vote in the general election for all other races, and you must choose for or against a bond proposal, $100 million in bonds for drainage improvements. So, my message to you, Judge, and the Commissioners' Court, and those in attendance, is please do your best to explain to your family members, to your acquaintances who are going to go vote this week in early voting, or to go out to vote in Election Day, to please read the ballot carefully, make your choices very carefully, and if you choose to vote straight ticket, do so, but please also pay special attention to mark your ballot for special election as well. That's the message. It's a public information message, quite frankly, and we hope that every... It's already a struggle to get people to vote. What we don't want is to discourage people from voting next time when their true intention was not carried out by the ballot. So...
Thank you, Solomon.
Thank you.
You know, this program appears Thursday, and I just want to let you know what he's saying. If you look at the ballot, there's a little square on this side that's got the congressional race, and then over here, you start with the rest of the elections. What Solomon is saying is that if you're in that district, vote on this and then continue on over here, and that's basically it, right?
That's correct, Judge, and we have alerted both elections offices in both counties and the parties as well, so that they can inform other constituencies.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. My comments are very brief. I just wanted to restate the fact that I believe the Isla Blanca Park leases that have been drafted by you guys are not in the best interest of the citizens of Cameron County. That was my first comment. I also had a comment about the boat ramps in Isla Blanca Park that exist right now. I'm wondering why those boat ramps were not maintained and are not being used. Why is there a new one being built? That's my comment and my question.
Thank you.
My name's Dalton Lee, and with friends of Isla Blanca Park. We thought we'd give you guys the results of 30,000 petition responses concerning Isla Blanca Park and keeping it as a park. And basically, what it boils down to is these are the items that were checked off on the little demographic box at the bottom of the petitions. So some people utilize the park for one item, but most people utilize the park for multiple items. Good example is they use it for sightseeing, looking at the beach and things of that nature, sailing, boating. You can see all the percentages right here. RV spaces, fishing, pavilions, restrooms, parking lots, nature observance, going out with their friends to the park, shell hunting, and all those things, exploring the area. Boy scout camp is in there, surfing, kiteboarding, bicycling, walking, jogging, and interestingly enough, sunning their buns was one of them, which is basically getting a suntan, and dolphin cove, utilizing the dolphin cove facilities where the children's beach is, and all of their family use what they come out as a family to utilize the park, and they swimming and wading in the water at the beach. The reason why we went to this much effort on this was to show what the utilization of the park was for, for park purposes only. So basically, we have read all of the contracts thoroughly, all of the lease contracts, and nowhere on there does it say to lease out the land for 100 years to a couple of developers for whatever purpose they have. Nobody said that they wanted timeshare condominiums or casinos on that property, and this is the result of that. And to make, to set a couple of things straight, we have a coalition of people, and we have stayed 100% nonpartisan, whether you like to believe that or not, that's the case because of the way that we've done this. By the way, Judge, we're not a nonprofit group. I misstated it. We're a group that is not, is tax exempt, which is a different thing altogether. We have to utilize all our money on our project. But we could if we wanted to have gone into the political end of things, but we chose not to because we have a coalition of Libertarians, Democrats, Republicans, myself being a Democrat, and truly used to be apathetic people. But this one issue is the point. It's not about personalities, it's not about parties, it's about the issue. Nobody in this entire, on this entire issue, out of all the respondents, said anything other than, they didn't say that they felt like it was important to put another hotel on the island, except that let, go ahead. In fact, there were people who actually said, "Go ahead and let private investors do that." And that's fine, but why do it on county park property? And basically, we don't, we agree to not agree with you on the subject of the use of the park. And from what your statistics, the county statistics state, that there are over 300,000 people come through that turnstile every year into that park. Well, this is basically a, you know, 30,000 respondents, so that's a pretty good percentage right there. And we want to thank you for paying attention to the issue, but we'd like you to end up considering this issue even further. And by the way, we really like Mr. Benavides, and we agree for his family also. He's a wonderful guy, and we just want to make sure you guys understand that it's nothing personal, it's not even politics, it's about the issue. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And we absolutely agree with you, 100%. All right. Three, presentation by delinquent tax attorney on status of foreclosed priorities... I'm sorry, wait a minute. Two, presentation of...
Judge, I would like one minute of time, or maybe a little less. But I have not had a chance to publicly, aside from the comments in the paper, to say anything about our friend Pete Benavides. And, you know, I mean, with all due respect to you, Sophie, I think there's one issue, many issues that have gone unsaid, and, you know, I knew Pete in a little different way, maybe than a lot of the folks up here, you know, because I, you know, our friendship was a gardening friendship. We bought our seed plants for tomatoes and chilies at the same place. You know, there was another area that Pete had a big interest in, and I've never, I didn't hear mention at all, you know, and I'm a farm boy and a ranch boy as far as growing up is concerned. I know what it takes to sow, plant seeds and sow them and make them grow and make them produce, and, you know, Pete showed me in a very valuable way his care for his family through what he did in that respect. And, you know, no one's made mention of his greenhouse, no one has made mention of all these things that he did. And we had the opportunity in the six years that I've served here to take a number of road trips with Pete, you know, whether it be a recreational road trip, or whether it be a meeting in Rockport, you know, whatever the case might have been. You know, I was able to take a number of road trips and, you know, visit for hours upon hours at a time with him in regards to many things, and the things that most he cared about. And I have to publicly say that the one thing that constantly, on a very regular basis, when we went anywhere and did anything and spent time together, was his family. And, you know, it was a real joy to have been able to partake in those trips, and I took the wrath of some of those road trips because the last one we took was to Rockport. And we went over there, and it was a meeting with a bunch of kids, you know, that we had there on the blue beach projects, clean beach project that they're doing. And, you know, after we spent the day there on a forum and answering questions and talking and doing things, we had lunch with these kids, and Dairy Queen was catering. And Pete looked at me, he says, "You bring me to Rockport and you take me to eat at Dairy Queen? What is this?" You know, I mean, this is like the golf capital of the world next to Brownsville, you know. But it was, it was a real joy every time, Sophie, that we did anything. We didn't come back and report to Commissioners' Court a lot of things that we did, but there were a number of occasions that we talked and we shared salsa that I made, we shared chilies that I pickled, you know, or my wife pickled, I should say. I better not get in trouble there. But, you know, it was a real pleasure, a real pleasure to have, to be able to say that I counted him amongst a friend, okay, Sophie. So, you know, I think that there was a little side of him that went unsaid that I just wanted to make sure that folks in here probably never knew about, you know. And there was another, another way that he showed caring, and he showed that it took a big effort to get things growing and, you know, tended to and then enjoying. So, you know, wanted to share that with you all.
Thank you. Let me jump, is anybody here from Isabel Boswell? I don't know if she was informed about the presentation tonight. Can we table item number two for right now?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Garza. Let me move, jump over to item number 10, consideration and authorization to transfer job slot number 08, job titled Court Records Coordinator, and job slot number 07, job titled Robin Court Bailiff from County Court Law Number 1, Fund 100-426 to County Court Law Number 3, Fund 100-428. Judge Robins, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Judge. Ms. Benavides, I don't think I ever laughed as hard in my whole entire life. One trip we took on a bus of Democrats to Corpus Christi, I was surrounded by Commissioner Benavides, of course, and Benny Ochoa.
Oh, gee.
And, oh my goodness, I called my wife along the way. I was hurting, I was crying, I was laughing. She said, "What are you, what's wrong?" And I said, "I'm laughing with Commissioner Benavides and Benny Ochoa, and the person they made the fun of the most was our honorable judge here." Oh my goodness. But what a wonderful person, your husband. Incredible. I'll be telling a story for the rest of my life, I guarantee it. Wonderful guy. Commissioners, Judge, real briefly, like you have a historic new courthouse here, which is, by the way, the most beautiful building I've seen in a long time. It's just done so well, and I congratulate each and every one of you for putting this together for the citizens of Cameron County. Wonderful. We're going to have something quite historic on the second floor at the courthouse starting January 1st. We're going to have two brand-new county court judges, two brand-new county court judges' staffs, coordinator, administrator, two probably new bailiffs. We have one remaining staff, though, that we can't seem to get rid of. That would be my staff and myself. I'm returning back to county court and looking forward to it. Along the way, I've been working very diligently with the incoming judges, McDonald and Bittencourt, and their staffs have been training with my staff along the way. We've been doing whatever we can to facilitate a smooth transition, them coming in, them understanding the criminal, the civil, everything that works. They're more than capable to do it, no problem, but some of the learning curve, some of the little nuances that we've picked up over the last eight years there, that's what we've been trying to do, facilitate and help them, assist them in any way we can. Along the way, over the years, we have had a records coordinator who is a longtime employee of the county. She's been assisting County Court 1, County Court 3. All she does is assist us with all our files. County Court 2 has a unique situation where they have their own files clerked, they have their own files in their office. Space is limited, we can't have our files in our office, so we have to have people run back and forth, get all our files, civil, criminal, I mean, every day, and it's a ton of work. This one position, of course, is on County Court 1's budget, and the Rover Bailiff, also same situation, assists all the three courts, but is also under the County 1 budget. I'm asking for a lateral move of these two positions, not new persons, not new positions, not new money, nothing at all, just if you would allow them to be supervised by my staff and by myself personally, so that I can make sure that they are assisting the two new judges and their courts as they need to, since, again, we've been there, we coordinate with the bailiff and all three courts for jail docket arraignments, everything we need. And the records coordinator, she assists County Court 1 and County Court 3 equally. We split her time, but again, she's been doing this for us for eight years, and we'd like to be able to manage her, supervise her, along with the Rover Bailiff. That's all we're asking. Judge Leal had asked for this, along the way it was tabled, so I said, "Well, let me come back and let me ask you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer." I visited with Judge McDonald, who is affected by the Court Records Coordinator. He had no problem. He said, "Judge, you're the presiding judge, you've been helping us, whatever you wish to do, that's fine with me." So there's no concern from him. Actually, he's supporting this. That's what I wanted to visit with you about.
Any questions? Yes, Judge, and I appreciate your being before us today and presenting this. And that's exactly how the agenda item reads on the agenda. However, on the form that was prepared for the agenda preparation, it has another issue on there that is, does not show up on the agenda, and I don't know whether it was an oversight.
I think it was explained to us that it wasn't been, hadn't been put on, so we'll just put on and visit on it later.
When, when the agenda was being prepared, Commissioner, Yvette didn't recognize that as being a separate item.
A second portion.
She believed it was the background information for the initial item, and so we'll place it on the agenda at our next meeting so the court can consider that.
Okay, fine. Sure. As far as I understand, what we're going to be voting on is what's actually on the agenda item and not...
That is correct.
The total package that's here.
Which means that you won't be coming back asking for more staff?
No. No, the staff that exists right now, the one Rover who assists all three courts, and the one record coordinator who assists County Court 1 and County Court 3, she's on County Court 1's budget. We'd like her to transfer over to our budget for our supervision, but no additional staff, no additional personnel, no additional money, nothing at all, just so that we can, I can make sure that we're doing things and they're doing what they need to do to assist the other courts.
I move to approve.
To refine the procedure.
So then, I just want to make sure that we're clear. The second consideration and authorization is...
It's not before you. It wasn't put on for today, and we'll visit on that at a future meeting. meeting.
Yeah, we're, we're sorry, it's usually separate items will come under separate headings, and we just didn't recognize it as a separate item.
Okay, is the motion to approve, is there a second to that motion? Second by Commissioner Garsa, any further discussion, all those in favor, signature by State and I.
Aye.
I'll suppose motion carries.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you very much. Just one additional item, if I may be so bold, on travel items 41C, we have a interpreter in County Court 1 and 2 and an interpreter in County Court 3. New mandated regulations require that they obtain continuing education in interpreting. There's seminar, there's very few, but there's one coming up in November, they've put in their reservations, we'd like to get that approved. Yes, under travel items.
If it's recommended by the, by the, the, where are you?
Javier.
Not this corner, say, yeah, for, for, you need to be sitting over here, man.
To be like right next to Frank.
Yeah.
Yeah, you need to be on the front row, Javier.
Yeah.
General.
Yeah, if it's recommended by him, Judge, it's automatic as far as we're concerned.
Very well, just thought I'd bring it to your attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge.
Make a motion for approval.
I think that we did.
Is it with both of them?
Yeah, is it the pasol train, Commissioner?
This, this straight bar is kind of hard, you know?
Yeah, it's hard to see.
All right.
It's a beautiful.
Okay, let me take up item number 16, we have consideration, possible action regarding request by Justice of Peace Courts in Precinct 5 Places 1 and 2 to purchase a case management software.
Judge Nohos, Honorable Court, Judge Weiss and myself have prepared, or come, I guess, in request of a professional software program for our staff. We sent you some bids, there's some, there's two or three bids that we sent you. This, we have been working with the Computer Center, with Mr. Juarez and his staff, with a program called Easy Justice. Hamer Enterprises is trying to develop a software program for us, but in all reality, we have been spinning our wheels for four years. This program has not been completed fully, they were given a deadline of September the 30th to complete this program. Our offices are continued, continuing to have problems with it, and I'm going to say other offices. From the initiation of working with Easy Justice, my staff, through many hours of research and myself, decided that we were, were not going to get onto this program, and to this program was at least 75 to 80% complete, being that we were the only office that has been running automated for more than five years or closer to 10 years, I believe. My office has been working with the Office of Court Administration program. We're very, very concerned that we are just going to continue to be backlogged with our work because we do not have the essential program that we need to run our offices professionally. We have brought Net Data, Hill Country, Justice Professional Solutions, vendors that have come and visited with all the Justice of the Peace Courts. We have a Justice Court Technology Fund that clearly states that if, in every fine that we collect, the funds are designated for, to only finance the cost of continuing education and training for Justice Courts and to purchase and maintain a technology enhancement for Justice Courts, and includes computer software, hardware, systems, networks, imaging systems, and so forth. I'm going to give you all copies of this.
Judge Weiss? Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, Judge. If I may just take a few minutes to speak about something that we're not, that what we're here for. Back in the latter part of 1996, early part of 1997, the Justice of the Peace Position, Precinct 5, Place 2, became vacant. And, long story short, it became a political hot potato, and ultimately, I was appointed to that position. And I, I remember very clearly, and I keep a list of other elected officials here in this county that have visited me in that office, and I remember very distinctly, Commissioner Benavides was one of the very first elected officials here in this county that went by and congratulated me after he actually voted for me to be placed in this position, and I never forget those, there's been a few other elected officials, and I keep a list, and, and he was one of the very first that went by there and congratulated me, and I never forget that. We pray that peace be with you, Ms. Benavides, and your family. He was a great man. We come before you all, Commissioners and Judge, and I don't want to get into the discussion of Hamer. I am perhaps, myself and my clerks and my court, maybe one of, of, perhaps two courts that have actually weighed both the Hamer Easy Justice Program and the other presentations of software companies that Judge Gonzalez just mentioned. And I believe she provided you all with three different proposals, one from Hill Country Fair and Net Data, and I don't recall the third one, but my clerks have actually sat in all three presentations of these companies. They've, have been working with Easy Justice, Hamer, since the inception, and I base my comments on what little involvement I have been in with Easy Justice and along with my clerks' comments and, and their experience with both Easy Justice and with the presentations that they attended from these other companies. And I know that we had set deadlines that have been extended and extended for Hamer Enterprise, or Hamer Company. I know Commissioner Wood, at one time, I believe, rightfully questioned the status of it, and it really continues. I've spoken with Mark Yates, and I've emailed correspondence to him regarding end-of-the-month reports, and this was perhaps maybe two months ago, when I was questioning when these reports are, we were going to have the ability to generate our reports to the county and not having to perform both manually and through Easy Justice reports. At this time, our courts, our clerks are, are having to perform both manually, end-of-the-month reports to the county and through Easy Justice, and his office has requested that we continue to do this, and it continues. And so it's, it's, it's twice as much work for my clerks. I indicated to Mark Yates that I was getting real close to abandoning Easy Justice, I'm at that point. It's, I've had the opportunity to look at Easy Justice, and you've gotten a lot of descriptions of how it performs and the performance, and I really do believe, and I'm no, in no way an expert in computer softwares, but from my opinion as a layperson, I think we're developing a 19, a brand-new software program on a 1960 Chevrolet chassis, it's not going to work. We've, we've looked at a lot of different areas and aspects that these, that, of different type of reports that we need to generate, whether it's filings, and it's not efficient, it's very time-consuming, coupled with the fact that it's, it slows down because of the distance in Harlingen, whether it be modem problems or just downtime. I don't see this ever reaching a point that it's going to have the capability of what I've observed in these other computer software programs. I understand the reason, I, I gave it, I think I gave it a fair amount of time for it to be developed. I've tried to be fair and honest in my reports to you previously regarding Easy Justice, and I understand the economics of trying to develop Easy Justice here, to try to avoid licensing fees or whatever the case may be. Hill Country Fair is in existence, is being utilized in 207 local, municipal, and county, and state entities. It's a proven computer software program. It's able to be customized, something that was being questioned or being highlighted, highlighted by Easy Justice. Some have said that it, that other programs are not, do not have that capability to be customized, and they actually do. I would really like to set up a short presentation for y'all in the very near future with a comparison of Easy Justice, if we can get Mr. Hamer to come in, along with Hill Country Fair, so y'all can get a firsthand look of how, the difference of it. I really do, we are here asking y'all to approve for myself and Judge Gonzalez, these funds that are being collected by our offices on each individual case, a technology fund, so that we may stop wasting time and move forward with this, and that is our request at this time.
Why don't we do this, Judges, I mean, I think all of us have questions about the success of this program. It, it doesn't seem to have turned out what people thought it was going to turn out as. But, I mean, we also got letters from Judges saying that they were all right with it, and I've got several phone calls as well. I mean, I think we need to workshop this thing, talk it out, find out exactly what's going on, why it's been so delayed, how it's not working for you, how we can, whether that's fixable, whether we do need to move on to something else, what are the costs involved and so forth, because it is, it's, it is something that is troubling us, and I think it's something that, you know, one of, let me give you an example, I, I received a phone call from Colm Limberger the other day, and Colm Limberger wanted to tie into this, and in order for us to start, in order for them to start the collection program that we hired him several years ago to, to perform, and they're being told by the Hamer people that they're going to charge them additional amounts to tie into it so we can collect. Well, that kind of works against what we're trying to do, which is-
Absolutely.
Well, that, that probably would not have come up if Hamer had gotten the contract to do the collection.
Yeah.
They would have installed it long ago.
Right.
Like it should have been done.
So, so there's issues all over the place on this thing, but, but at the same time, you know, we've got these phone calls and these messages, these letters from the Judges that, that, that raises, raise questions on both ends for us, and so I, I just, I think this is something that's going to require prolonged discussion, an analysis of the whole issue with our computer department, all the judges present, our district attorney's office, our tax collection people, our delinquent account collection people and so forth. And so, and have everybody come in here and spend about an hour and go over all this stuff so that we can figure out exactly what, what the problem is, whether it's fixable, and if not, what are the alternatives.
One of the things that I, on this, the documents that I gave you, we have, I think as elected officials, we have the right to choose what we want for our staff, we collect the funds to, to provide funding for what we need. There was funding that could have brought us the top-of-the-line computer software, top-of-the-line. We were not aware that that money, that technology fund had been spent by the Computer Center on buying a server to serve the, the whole county. And I think that there's a possibility that I am going to request our county ju, our county attorney for an opinion on this. These funds were spent without even them contacting any of the Justice of the Peace Courts. And if, you know, we, in, in the five years that we have been collecting the technology fund, my office alone, and I'm not one of the bigger offices, but my office alone has collected close to $30,000, which very much could suffice us in getting a program suitable for our offices. Another thing that you have, I gave you a letter from the Department of Public Safety-
I don't think we're familiar with this issue of spending designated funds.
It was approved by Commissioners Court.
Well.
According to Mr. Juarez, we were never aware of it, and I think that's something-
I think this was to provide complete and total interconnectivity through the JP's and through the other courts and through the clerks and, and all of this as part of the Hamer package.
It was not part of all the computer departments from-
Got messed up.
I mean, the, the computer department was not working with other departments outside of the court system.
We were never aware that $99,000 spent from the technology fund that was collected by the Justice Courts were spent on other entities. I guess that would be my comment. Another thing is that we also are being provided deadlines, like from the Department of Public Safety, where we have to go and start reporting all our convictions electronically, and the program that we are trying to implement is just not going, is, it's, it's just not, does not have that entity in place. I also met with the people from Limberger and at our state conference, I have had Mr. Givada personally visit my office regarding the collections, and he said, you know, his comment has been over and over, even Mr. Romo from the state office who was at the state conference stated, "Judge, your program that you are trying to implement is just not compatible and it is not going to work." We have deadlines, we have collections that we have to do, we're just spinning our wheels. If we have the monies that we are collecting, my, myself and Judge Weiss are collecting monies every day on every fine that we collect, I am going to plead with you to allow us to get the program that is going to be suitable for us, and that is not going to, my evaluation and our staff's evaluation is that if we continue to allow Hamer Enterprises to come in and promise and promise and promise and promise, for four years he's been promising, those are collections that we have not collected for four years and monies that we need desperately in our county, those are monies that are floating up there in the sky because we do not have the sufficient program. So I am asking you to please, even if you're going to table it, to not table it too long because we really need a technology software program in our office. My staff, fortunately, is still on OCA, we're the only office that has been fully automated for many years, we are ready for the transition, we are ready to get on board with another company.
Okay, well, I don't, we're not going to delay it for very long, I mean, we just, we want to workshop it, I mean, we want to find out more, we want to talk to all, all the players, and then, I mean, we, we have problems with this too, I mean, you're not the only one, and so we're, we're going to look at this issue, and I want to, I want to report on this issue about the 99,000, I thought it was what John said, which is-
The 99 was the basis that was being used to develop the Hamer program, which was supposedly going to interconnect everyone.
In a me, in a meeting that we have with me, Dalia Lopez.
Hold on, just a second, let me-
And, and then the other thing, you know, I know, I've brought up Hamer several times, and best I can recall, the last two times I've asked that they be here, they didn't-
They have not.
And I think the idea of Judge Weiss of having Hamer here and, and really getting down to the nitty-gritty of where they are, what they're going to do, how they're going to accomplish it, and how they're going to be able to service, what- accomplish it, and how they're going to be able to service what we thought we were contracting for.
And the problems with Colum Leinberger and so forth. All that needs to be aired out.
You're absolutely right. And what happened, I think the misconception all along was that Hamer was certifiable to give us a certifiable software program. And the unfortunate situation is, once he got into the nitty gritty, he said, "I cannot write this program. This program has to be written by 11 justices of the peace." And all 11 of us have different opinions of how we run our offices, and therefore, that's why that big old major problem has been created.
Okay. Well, we'll schedule a workshop on this real soon. We'll get, we'll find out everybody's schedule, make sure we get everybody in here at the same time. Give it some time, about an hour, and then we'll make a, have a presentation, and then we'll have an actual-
Judge, I have a comment, and that's fine, but I agree, and I think all of us agree that we cannot let this go on and on and on. And my concern is, Hamer better come with some very definite answers, and now I, I've lost trust in them. If, if they come in here and make promises again, you know, they, they haven't kept their timelines, they haven't been able to produce, so we have to be very sensitive to that.
If they just come in, that would be a plus.
My traffic, my traffic coordinator, who's very up to par with everything that's going on, he's my little computer whiz, attended a two-meeting workshop, two-day workshop last week here in Brownsville, and he wanted me to share this with you. He said, "Judge, please tell them that it was two days that I just wasted, that I could have been in my office and worked my traffic." He said, "First of all, they didn't train us on anything. And secondly, all they were doing was with a pad, asking questions and writing things down. They never trained us whatsoever." He says, "I am tired, Judge. I, I can't go to these trainings because I'm not learning anything, and these people are just giving us the runaround." And Judge Wise is absolutely right. If they've taken four years to complete this program and we're still being given the runaround, I think that it needs to be dished. And I think that we need to move ahead, Judge, with y'all's blessing, and we need to look at a professional company like the, the companies that I have forwarded to you all that will give us every single aspect of our offices, every single one of them.
All right. Thank you. Let me just make a, a part of the record, the letter that Judge Salazar sent us.
I just wanted to add one thing to Ms. Benavides. Also, I extend my condolences to you and your family. I had, I'm just going to share one little experience I had the last time I came to Commissioner's Court, and I know that, that Pete and I kind of had our little difference about a year ago for, over a name-calling. But I did want to tell you that the last time that I did see Pete, I, he asked me to forgive him for calling me a name, and I said, "Pete, it was a slip of the tongue, everybody has them." He says, "Pero no, no te voy a dejar, and I'm not going to leave you without giving me a hug and a kiss." So I did, because Pete and I go back for about 35 years as friends, and I know that you will miss him, and with the Lord's blessings, he will make your days much better as time goes along. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just make this letter from Judge Salazar part of the record. Okay, let's go-
Judge, just in closing, if I may very briefly-
Well, I want to interrupt just a bit, you know. It's more difficult, it seems like, to get a word in edgewise when we're in a straight line up here.
We're edgewise.
You know, because we're edgewise or whatever. But I, I know that the last time we discussed this issue, I asked Javier if he could please provide us an amount of what we've collected in this technology fund, okay? Or how much money there is in the technology fund? And also, an accounting of what has been spent from the technology fund? So that we'd know how much on a monthly basis or on a yearly basis comes into this county on $4. It should not be that difficult because it's $4 for every misdemeanor offense that goes before the JP courts, right? So if we could get an accounting of this monies, and I'm, I'm sure that we've spent monies on computer systems, networking, travel, you know, all these other things that we do with the JPs, because all of those are, are expenses that are allowed according to how the money can be used. And I, I do, I would be remiss in not mentioning that I got four phone calls yesterday from other JPs, you know, who are not here today because they had issues on their courts. But totally contrary to what I heard, it's like we had two days of great training, my staff came back saying that they had been well-trained, you know? I believe that we're getting what we need. Please don't make any changes. You know, the, the presentation that you're hearing is Sally's and David's presentation, you know? Which is fine, I don't have a problem with it. I think that there needs to be presentations made. But all the phone calls I had yesterday, and now including the letter from Linda Salazar, are like in favor of the system that is being developed. And I think that needs to be said publicly, you know? And, you know, each one has to work with what we work best with, but I think that, you know, I would not be doing my job if I didn't mention that about the other JPs.
I would also like, one more thing I would also like to mention, and it's, this is a very critical, very, very critical that I want you to keep in mind. Like I said, we have been looking at the program. We've been looking at it, we've been looking over and over and over at little details. There's details in that program, ladies and gentlemen. Word, mic. Some of our courts are not collecting the right court cost. And if we're not collecting the right court cost, and if we continue with easy justice as the lead program for the justices of the peace in Cameron County, it's going to open up our door to the judicial conduct review. And that is very, very critical. I cannot continue, I, I continue, have told my, my colleagues this, it's very critical. I am not going to take that right to Austin, to the Judicial Conduct Commission. That is why it's very adamant that we look at this program. There are court costs that are being collected that are not accurate and that are not proper. And I tell, you've been in the court system for as long as I have, where we are constantly, adamantly looking at all the court costs. We have had the auditor's office, we just had a, a deal at the auditor's office on, on a certain court cost that we collect or in our certain fine, that half of the fine has to go to the, to the school districts and are, you know, it's not being, it was not being done.
Okay.
It was not being done.
And I think that's why the Judges-
That's how critical this is.
Right. And I think the Judges' suggestion is good, and I, please don't under, don't misrepresent what I said. I just wanted to make sure that their point got across. You and I have had that conversation before-
We have that conversation, and I would not be here if I would not want the best for me and my husband.
Okay. All right. Judge Wise is going to wrap it up. Thank you, Judge.
I, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Godson. And I think all of us have put, put a lot of time and effort in this development of easy justice. Some of us more than others, and I will be the first to admit, I probably have not invested the time and effort as much as maybe some of the other Judges in the upper end of the Cameron County. And for whatever reasons that they're campaigning for easy justice, I respect that. But I can tell you without any doubt, I may be the only court whose clerks have weighed both, they've worked with both. The other, some of the majority of the other courts, they haven't even attended the presentations. So how can they effectively and fairly say that, you know, compare one with the other? My clerks have worked with easy justice from the inception. They've attended all the other presentations of software programs, and they've been very intense presentations, and there's no comparison, and I've also attended. There's no comparison. So let's call these people to the carpet. Let's make a presentation, and then you all decide for yourselves who's more sophisticated.
Judge, and I appreciate y'all bringing this back to us. One thing that I want to, and we will have a workshop, but what I'd like to do, if it's at all possible, or I'd like y'all to do, if y'all could, if the JPs can meet before you get over here and discuss this thing, because I think, I think that, that, that if, if there's issues where there's disagreement or how it's being handled within the JPs that can make, that can allow us to understand the differences of opinion or why there is, it would be very helpful for us when you come forward because it could really give light to really what is going on with respect to this system that we have here today. I don't think that, well, I personally don't have any problems with having different JPs do, use different systems if it doesn't affect the overall operation. I mean, as long as it works for you, it works. That's, as long as it can connect up-
And that's what I would like. Just give us that ability to choose in whatever way.
And if it can connect up to the main system, then we're fine with that. Okay? And, our, Luis Gilberto Nosa is fine with that. As long as, one, it doesn't interfere with how it's, it, the information is transmitted to the auditor's office and to the, the folks that are required to disburse the money and the state. And secondly, as long as the, the costs that the county has to bear are not so great that it would be prohibitive. But that's all something that we have to look at when we do the workshop, and we'll, 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 we'll set it up in a couple of weeks. But I'd like for y'all to meet amongst yourselves first and then come to us, because I know y'all are very united, y'all work real close together. I was frankly very surprised at the phone calls that I got as well because, you know, and I understand the concerns that you, that you have. The, I got the same exact calls that David got, and just, it's almost like they were at the same exact time too, because I, I got them all the yesterday and one the day before. And then, and then we, and I just saw the letter for the first time today. And so, we don't under, we're not in, we're not in the trenches like y'all are, we're not. We're over here, and we don't really know how it works, so it would be important for us, for y'all to talk about it, then come to us, we'll set up a workshop. We're going to ask these people to come here. And, and again, part of the discussion has to be also what was stated by Judge Gonzalez, which is, what's going on with this technology fund and how is it being spent and why, what is, what is the, what is, is there any substance to the allegation that it's not being used for what it's legally required to be used? Because we need to know that. Because when we're made presentations on, on funding requests made by the different departments, all these presentations have to go through that man over there that sits there, and, and he has to check to see that they're legal. And they also have to go through the auditor's office, and he's got to check that it's legal because he looks at it from a different perspective. He looks at it from the perspective of whether or not the funding source can be used for that particular program that's being requested that we fund. And then it goes to Mr. Burst, and he looks at all, it's kind of a second check to look at the legality. When it gets to us, if nobody says anything, then we're assuming, when the check's there, that all that's been cleared. And if it's, if it didn't happen, if somebody messed up and, and did not give us the right advice with respect to these funding issues, then we need to reexamine that, and some heck needs to be paid on that. But anyway, I don't want to get into that anymore, we, we spent too much time on this already, can we?
Judge, I have one more question. And it's going to be, it's just real short.
And then I have one.
Okay. Well, I, you know, I'm trying to just kind of frame in my mind what we can expect for the workshop. And let me make sure I understand correctly. We have three proposals here that you, that I kind of briefly went over.
Yeah, those are, we only picked out three.
Okay. Would it be, would it be correct for me to assume that the Hill Country Software Group cost per office is $536?
Per month.
Per month?
Yes, sir.
And the net data is $750?
You're on. That one's a little bit-
And the, the last one is 10,000, I mean, $1,048?
Yes, sir.
And that would be per office, per month?
Per month.
Okay.
And now, Hill Country, after three years, the county owns it?
Right. Well, no, don't tell me anymore, that's it. I just wanted to-
And it seems, from, from the conversations, it seems like you favor Hill Country.
Hill Country. I just want you all to please keep an open mind that if my, our colleagues decide to continue rolling their wheels with the software program that's being created, that you allow us to go in the direction that we feel is going to professionalize our offices.
Judge, Judge Sally especially, and sometimes I have a difficult time trying to make a comparison that even I understand, so help me out here.
Absolutely.
You know, when I, when I was a kid in our neighborhood, black and white TVs first came into effect, and everyone went over to the neighbor's house and watched the black and white TV. And you, Judge Sally, have been on the system for years.
Yes, sir.
You've gone through the black and white system already. You're ready-
I have forgett fingers from doing 17 years of docketing.
You're ready to move to color TV?
Definitely.
Even high-def TV? High-def TV?
We've been spinning our, spinning our wheels for four years trying to get a colored TV set.
And, but, but, you know, I also understand that people who have never had any TV, if they get a black and white, which maybe is what they're getting with Hamer-
Oh, absolutely.
Then they're all pleased with it.
They went from docketing to, oh gosh, this looks okay.
Yeah. Because they've never experienced anything else before. And I think that's where we may be at.
Okay. Well, we'll find out.
We've got an election here.
All right. Thank you very much, Judge Sally.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge.
There's a motion to a table pending a workshop on this?
Second.
Who made the motion?
I will.
Okay. Commissioner, second by Commissioner Godson, although they favor signify by state and I, I'll suppose motion carries. I, I want to, I want to, I asked a gentleman to come, and I know he's been waiting for a little while, but I don't know if he's here, if he's here or not. I got a phone call from a gentleman on this item number 11, and I don't want him to wait all day if he's here. Consideration of Possible Action Regarding Posting of Signs and Setting Speed Limit Signs at Boca Chica Beach. And I, I don't remember his name.
Ernesto Nosa?
No, 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 no. It was a gentleman that called me. Is anybody here on that one issue? Okay. Well, let's take it up anyway because it's important. Because I have had calls on this issue a long time ago, and I know this was a big issue with Pete, you know? There's people that, that drive at all sorts of speeds and onto the dunes at Boca Chica Beach, and they probably do the same thing in the northern part of the island as well, beyond the park system. And it, it creates a lot of safety issues, and people, people don't understand that Boca Chica Beach is not a county park. We would like it to be a county park, but we can't get the state or the federal government to come forward and lease the property that they own there, which is 95% of it. Because we have had applications for funding for a park there. We have been told by the Parks and Wildlife that they will fully fund up to the half a million dollar limit on a park there, before, when they had that money, before they cut it to nothing. And, and we think it's critical that there be a county presence there, without tolls, without tolls, but, but there, that, that we have a permanent presence there in some respect to allow for a safer beach and a cleaner beach. But we don't have that at this point. But it's still within the county, and we still have general jurisdiction over that area, and on, and on law enforcement issues, it is very difficult for us to have a permanent presence there without a county department there because in order for you to get there from the Parks Department, it takes, it's a, it's a 60-mile drive each way. You got to drive 30 miles up to a certain point where you can come back and drive another 25 or so miles. So it's 120 miles every time they would drive up there. For the sheriff, it's probably not as far, but it's still a good, you know, 45-minute drive in each direction from where he's at. And so, it's very hard for us to have a permanent law enforcement presence there, except for during key periods of time. What we should though, have some kind of signage there and some posting on two issues, and that, one of them is, we should have signage on speed limits, we should adopt an ordinance on the speed limit there. And secondly, we should have signage on, on, on pulling your vehicles onto the, onto the dunes, because it is a dangerous situation, and it affects, you know, the, the environmental issues that are involved with the, the, the greenage, the green, the plants and stuff that are on the dunes, and the dunes which provide a protection to, to the mainland. So I don't know what we need to do to do this. I know that we've always had studies made through traffic engineers before we adopt certain, promulgate certain ordinances on speed limits and so forth. I would ask that we pass a resolution instructing the Public Works Department or the Department of Transportation to, to retain our engineers to do a stu- of Transportation to, to retain our engineers to do a study on a speed limit and that we, and then, and also, we start the process of putting together some signage on the, going onto the dunes within the next few weeks, get that done and then pass a speed limit sign. Speed limit and have a, a method of posting that can provide information to those folks. Now, again, because we don't have a law enforcement presence, it's very difficult to enforce that. But if we sit down with the Constable's Office, the Parks Department and the Sheriff Department, I think we could probably get some kind of method by which those people that are abusing the process can, can, we can penalize. Maybe we can put a phone number out there that somebody can call right away and we can send somebody out there if we see somebody riding back and forth and doing some bad stuff. But in any event, we, there's been some legitimate concerns raised on this issue. We need to address them and we need to move, have some action taken.
Judge, on the, addressing that issue, it's a very special statute that gives counties bordering the Gulf and it requires a public hearing with 30 days' notice and the proposed ordinance has to be in place. So that's, that's the timeline you'll, you'll have to go with, but-
That's fine. Whatever, whatever it takes, Richard. But I, but we still, as I understand from our discussions before, we always are, are required to run, have our traffic engineers make certain recommendations when we set speed limits, right?
That statute doesn't require it. It's, gives the authority to the Commissioner's Court to set speed limits and to place signage. And specifically, takes now, the studies, of course, would be-
What we were told though, before, and-
Correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know.
Is that if we don't have a recommendation by a traffic engineer, that it exposes us to certain liability issues if we set speed limits that are inconsistent with public safety issues?
And Judge, there may be some regulations that haven't looked at with regard to the-
Your predecessor told us that.
Well, maybe so, Judge. But I, I-
Judge, yeah, that's exactly what, what was, the court was previously advised and it was, that was based on the idea of the court having to have some basis to set the limit.
And whatever the limit is.
Right. That it wasn't an arbitrary decision of the court, that it was based on a study and a recommendation from the engineer so that if anything occurred, whether it was challenged or if there was any, anything that occurred bad-
We have this report.
That you'd have, you'd have a reason why you set it that rate.
Pete?
What we've done in the past is just utilize our staff at the engineering department, go out and follow the process that Texas has on setting speed limits on, on state roads. And we go out there for, for about an hour. Texas normally does it for about four or five hours, but rural county roads, you know, we go out there for an hour and we measure the, the speed of, of vehicles. The last one we did was on Ted Hunt Road and we went out with the Sheriff Department and we, we took the speed limits for about an hour and then we take 85% of that speed and that's what we set the speed at. So we'll get with our engineering staff and we'll go out and we'll do that and all work with legal.
And if we can bring this back in how much time?
Well, we need a 30-day notice. We need to publish in the newspaper, 30-day public hearing.
30 days after you do the study though, no?
No, we can do it. We can, we can do the study within that timeframe.
So can we go forward and publish this thing?
We can publish this coming Sunday.
Okay. Let's do that, okay?
Well, Judge, that's what I was addressing, the problem with that from legal perspective, is that the ordinance requires that as part of your publication, you have to state that you have proposed ordinance in place for the public to view. And you can't do that until you-
That's why, that's why I thought that y'all have to come up with your recommendation first and then we have a public hearing.
Okay. If that's the case, then we can do the, we can do the study in the next two weeks.
Okay.
And then just put, publish a notice for the public hearings. And then that notice, we'll, we'll put in there the recommended speed limit that, that we will set.
Do we have speed limits established on the northern portion of South Padre Island? Along the beach?
Not sure that we do. I don't know if Javier-
Javier, are you here?
Javier?
Yes, we do. Even for the Eloteos, right?
Yes, we do. We have, it's, it's 10 miles from Beach Access 5 to Number 6 and then from there on north, it's 20 miles.
Okay. We, we probably, because, you know, Pete, you, you may have your people go out there and sit for an hour, two hours or longer and not have any traffic to measure. That could happen several different times. I would think that we would be within our possible rights to, to look at what we have on the northern part of South Padre Island and use that as a guideline for establishing something on Boca Chica Beach. We have the same type of environment.
I think you still have to go through the process, do you not?
Yeah, we'll, we'll go through the process and we'll get with legal and, and we'll start working on it immediately.
Okay. Thank you.
I think the congestion is very different from the north end of South Padre to Boca Chica too.
It depends, yeah. Yeah, it depends on the days. Okay. Thank you. There's a, do I have a motion to authorize the Department of Transportation to bring, begin the process of, of setting a speed limit at Boca Chica Beach and, and set the necessary signage?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner, Tamayo, second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor, it's signified by state and I. I'll oppose. Motion carries. Okay, yeah. What number are you? 15. Consideration and possible action regarding the selection of one or more projects for application to the 2007, 2008 Texas Community Development Program Colonia Construction Fund. We've gotten the applications, we've had the public hearing. It is my recommendation that we proceed forward-
Well, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. I think that we, that we have some excellent applications here, but with the high, for several reasons, I would like to make a motion that we, that we, that we go ahead and adopt the El Salado EDAP, First Time Sanitary Sewer Connections.
Second.
And I have something else to add to that. For one, it has the 195 points. And for my mother, is that I can just picture Peter Navides working, wanting us to choose this. So not only because I know that it has the best chance of getting funded, but in his honor, so.
Remember when we had the last hearing and he, he, he didn't, we were having discussions about what we were gonna do and I kept telling him, "Yeah, but you already, you already got your Brownie Road and your community center, your Brownie Road Park and your community center." And I don't remember what happened, but we, we, something came up and he said, "Now you're gonna tell me I already got my Brownie Road Park and my community center, right, Judge?"
He okay.
And he said, "You okay."
And Judge, I was the one he was kicking under the table.
That's right.
He sat next to me.
Okay. All right. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, it's signified by state and I. I'll oppose. Motion carries. Thank you. And, and on those, Gail, you know, I mean, I know you guys come in with some good proposals. It's just easier for us to do these things through, through the community development discretionary money than through this Colonia program because we don't have as many restrictions. When we, when you do come in with these first-time applications, we like to get y'all in because we know you do good work and we appreciate that good work you do and we love the partnership that we have with y'all. But we really, really are concerned about losing this money and leaving it on the table. And PUB's application presents almost a guarantee that we're gonna get the half a million dollars and we desperately need it for that community, so. Thank you. And Gail, some of us need to continue to talk about this and how we can help in the Beck Program or NAD Bank or whatever we can do, everything else. Thank you. Along with maybe PUB jointly joining us to talk about some of these issues.
And on the same note, I wanna thank Rosie for being here on the issue with Green Valley Farms because it's only when we are allowed to discuss this issue as a commission such as it was this morning, that it brings it to light and we'll make sure that we keep it on the forefront of what we plan to do.
Thank you. All right. We voted?
Is your vote, yeah?
Yes? All those in favor, signified by state and I. I'll oppose. Motion carries. Okay. That's a good one, Tom. Tom says we need to do number 13 'cause he's gotta get to a fire. All right. Consideration and possible acceptance of 2016-
I would suggest you go to the fire.
Homeland Security Program SHSP Grant Award. Tom?
Yeah, let me just give you a brief history on this. Originally, I'm with the HSAAC Committee, the Homeland Security Advisory Council. We were issued $1.6 million from the federal government for our region, which included Adago, Willacy and Cameron County. We dispersed those funds according to applications that were given in. Then we found out the next day after we awarded the funds that the state of Texas took over $800,000 off the top. So we were issued only $800,000. So we went in and reallocated the funds to the cities and the counties and the entities that had applied. Then, once we got our application and our award letter, and the county, by the way, got $70,000, in that award letter, they took that $800,000 that the government, or the, the state had taken off and redisplaced it amongst all the cities to come up with an equal playing field that each one of us had to sign off to give back to the governor's office. Because it's against the law for the state of Texas to take homeland security funds from the cities or the counties. They have to agree and give that money to the state of Texas for a particular project. The state of Texas is trying to put on three projects. One of them is called TDEX, which is the Texas Data Exchange System, Live Scan Implementation, which is the fingerprint one that we have here at the county, as well as regional emergency exercises. Our share that we're supposed to sign off for the state of Texas is $21,204.97. It's not a lot compared to the city of Brownsville and the city of McAllen, which have over $200,000 they have to give back to the state of Texas. But it is up to this board whether or not they want to sign off and give these $21,000 back to the state of Texas. Or if they don't sign it, choose not to sign it, it goes back to the Development Council and gets redistributed amongst the entities. We are looking that if urban funds, which Brownsville and, and McAllen had to give back, are able to, if they don't sign off on it, those funds are rumored to go back to those particular entities. And we're hoping that if we didn't sign this, then these $21,000s will go back to our particular agency. It's not a guarantee. It goes back through the HSAAC Committee and they determine where those funds go back to. So right now, what we're asking for, we do need a signature on the $70,000 because that is what we budgeted for. That is what we applied for. The extra $21,000 is up to the court to decide on if they would like to sign it or if they would like to not sign it and see if we can get those funds back.
You have a recommendation on this, that we accept the award and reject the request to assign part of the award?
That is my recommendation and I'm basing it off of the other cities and what I've spoken to. City of Brownsville, last I heard, was not going to sign the, the reimbursement, I mean, the, the $200,000 going back to the state. Neither was the city of McAllen. Clifford from South Padre Islands here, they're not signing it. Los Frescos is not, so.
Okay. There's a motion by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signified by state and I.
Aye.
Keep up the good work, Tom.
Tom, can I-
And go put out the fire.
On the sub-recipient agreement?
Yes.
What are all those other categories, like CCP, LETPP, you know?
Okay, the MMRS is the Metropolitan Medical Response System. That's another board that I'm on and those can only be utilized for first responders and hazmat materials. LETPP is strictly assigned to law enforcement only. That's the law enforcement, I'm not, there's so many different names on there. The SHSP is the one we qualify for. That's the, the correct name on it is the Homeland Security Grant Proposal.
Well, does anyone else in the county qualify for any of the other-
Yes.
-subcategories?
MMRS, we have its own entity of MMRS, so they qualify for their awards.
Okay.
The UASI, I, I haven't heard of anybody down here.
But that zero doesn't mean that, this is only for you?
This is just for the county. And the only thing that we can qualify for out of the county is the SHSP or the LETPP funds because we're not under an urban.
Okay.
And the UASI is the urban area special initiative. So that one is Brownsville-McAllen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else got a fire they gotta get to? Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. Do we have anybody here on the presentation by delinquent tax attorney on status for, for closed properties that have been sold at public auction? No?
Judge, if, if there's nobody here, I wanna pass something out that has been brought to my attention. And, you know, I wish that somebody would've showed up. Let me send some, come on over there. John Givada? No, John? I thought I saw somebody from the group here, but-
Were they told, Remy, that this was on the agenda?
I'm not sure, Judge.
I know that, you know, and I, I need to, and, you know, this is not a complaint or anything else. This is just like, I'd like to know how they do business. Simple. The chronology that was presented there was sent to me by Bill Roundtree, who is an attorney. It relates to a property that was bought at a foreclosure auction way back this year. The highest bidder delivered their cashier's check and they have had a lot of difficulty in getting a response from the office. And I've, I've been called on this twice. I've tried to help him. Last Friday, when I last called him, I was on the phone for over two hours trying to talk to a body, a live body there in trying to get some answers into how this church needed to proceed so that they could continue with the plans to do either the parking or building or whatever it is they're doing in Harlingen with his property. You know, I can see the frustration that Mr. Roundtree has experienced in trying to deal with this. And I just don't know what we need to do as a court. All these people are trying to do is, they're trying to pay for the property that they bought and get the title for it. And it's been, it's been like a major effort, you know? And I don't know if anyone else that has experienced buying for closed properties is going through the same thing, you know? I don't know if we had any calls, Remy, at, at your office?
We've never-
Never had a problem?
Nobody's ever talked to us about this.
Okay.
Was a law, was a law firm told that this agenda item was gonna be on there?
It had come from the Commissioner's office and-
I, I, yeah, I, they knew that it was gonna be on there.
Did you ever get a phone call from Mr. Roundtree?
I'd not-
No, I got a phone call.
But he never called my office.
And I thought I was, you know, I know there's some correspondence there and one of it as recently as, you know, the end of the month, it looks like, you know, the 27th from John Givada. But, you know, if nobody's here, maybe Judge, if you could help me at the next meeting, put out the agenda and, and just have them give us a report on what they do, you know?
I mean, I would think that they would wanna get it all signed so that they could get them, for the county could get their money, but I don't have an answer to that. I mean, we, we've never, you know, every document that we're presented with, you know, if it's recommended that we sign, we sign it. This is the first time I've ever heard of anything about this. I thought we were making a recommendation that this item was on the agenda to talk about whether or not they have been selling for closed properties the way they're supposed to be. That's why, what I thought this was on the agenda for. Because we've always complained about that they don't move sometimes as fast as they, we'd like them to do because we can get our money as quickly as possible, but-
Will I recommend that your office, Judge, let them know that it will be on the agenda at this meeting?
Just give us a report.
Well, we'll talk to them. You know, I wish Mr. Roundtree would've called us.
We'll make our efforts to get it resolved and then have a report made to the court.
He was trying to go channels, you know, I mean, trying to-
Okay.
I mean, he paid his bill, he says, "I, I just want to know," you know, and...
Okay, all right, there's some, um, well, the motion to ta, to table, I guess, by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner who?
I'll, I'll move the table, as long as we put it back on for...
Commissioner Tamayo made the motion, second by Commissioner Gratz, any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
House motion carries presentation on status of border colonial access program.
Ooh, I should have brought my glasses.
Yeah. Oh, you have a little bigger print there? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Judge, and commissioners, I passed out a spreadsheet, um, it's a little bit bigger than what was in your packet. Um, the top part of the spreadsheet includes the projects that were allocation projects, and then the bottom part includes the projects that we competed for and were funded by the state. Uh, the first project, Encantada, that project is a hundred percent complete. The second one, Tierra Bonita One and Two, uh, we just started that project in the last week or so. Uh, Lozano, that project, uh, we will begin after, um, we complete Arroyo Colorado Estates. Uh, Lago, uh, we will begin Lago subdivision after we complete Tierra Bonita One and Two. Uh, on Espasa Unit One and Two, we should be complete, uh, by the end of this week. Um, Arroyo Colorado Estates, uh, we just started that project, uh, and Juarez, uh, also, we, um, the weather cooperates, we should be complete by the end of this week. So, all the allocation, uh, projects, um, for the exception of two, um, have either been completed or are under construction. Uh, the big project, um, we have under the competitive call projects is Olmito, and we're probably...
Let me ask you, on, in regards to the top projects you just went through, when do you anticipate us sending the final bill on all of them?
Uh, we're probably pretty close to doing that in the two that we've completed. We're reconciling all the quantities, uh, in order to submit the, uh, the final invoice to TaxDOT for payment. But, um, I believe on, on one of the projects, TaxDOT has already, uh, signed off on the final inspection, and the other one, they've done the final inspection, and they found, you know, two or three minor items that we need to go back and correct. So normally, what we've experienced in the past, you know, thirty days after we get a final from TaxDOT, we should be able to get our final invoice paid. Uh, but now it's, you know, that's pretty much just administrative, you know, once the crew completes it and, and TaxDOT, um, gives us a final, you know, the rest is administrative work that we do, uh, in the office. Um, in Olmito, that's a huge, uh, three point three million project that we got funded by the state, and we'll probably be ready to start, uh, in the next ten days or so. Um, the court had authorized previously to, um, go ahead and, and, and secure the personnel and equipment needed for the, uh, Phase Three of the Cameron Park project. Uh, if you all recall, the reason we have two crews now is because we went ahead and hired the crew that we're gonna use for Olmito, uh, so that we can get them, uh, to start working on, on some of the projects. And so now what we want to do is hire the personnel that we're gonna use for Cameron Park, so that we can start, um, we can start that crew working on, on another project, uh, and bring back the crew that we had hired for Olmito. Now, Cameron Park, uh, PUB is already outstaking the utilities that will have to be relocated. And we're probably gonna be, uh, thirty to forty-five days behind PUB, and that's, that's a time that, that's necessary for PUB to go in and, and do what they need to do, and then we start negoti, and then we start coordinating, uh, the construction with them. So it's any, anywhere from thirty to sixty days, we should be right behind PUB. Uh, PUB, we met with them last week, um, they're in the process of getting their crew, they've got their equipment that they're gonna utilize, um, very, very possible, you know, probably ninety-nine percent sure that we might be utilizing some of the large equipment that PUB is gonna have, um, on site, and so that might be a little bit of savings, uh, to us as far as in the equipment rental. Um, we've got one little small project on the competitive is Galpin, um, and we're working with TaxDOT on trying to clarify the limits of that project. Um, and then we've got, uh, Rutherford Harding, uh, subdivision, that once we complete the Lozano project, we'll move, um, into that project. Um, so that's pretty much a recap. Um, I think, you know, we've done, um, a pretty good job of moving the projects along. Um, we did get an email from TaxDOT last week asking us, and they've done this before, um, asking us, you know, what the total amount we feel is left to upgrade all the colonias in Cameron County, um, road and drainage-wise.
Wow.
Um, and so we've submitted that, that number to TaxDOT last week.
Well, they were gonna utilize it for the hearing that, that they had.
And I think one of the reasons they were gonna utilize it is because Cameron County has effectively and aggressively taken the monies that were allocated to us and used them as quickly and as, as effectively as possible, whereas in some areas of the state, the counties haven't even started their project from years ago. And, you know, they're kind of, again, holding us up as the example of how to get this thing done and how to get it done right, so, Pete, we appreciate everything in the department does.
We did have that meeting last week with TaxDOT, or I did, in regards to, uh, the next seventy-five million dollars that are available. The, the recommendation being put forth is that, that they would allow us to tap into Phase Three or to the third...
Third call.
Third call on the seventy-five million, so we need to start preparing what we will be submitting to them, like, now.
Okay.
Okay? Uh, and, and the plan there is to hopefully be able to get those funds allocated, maybe even if it's only the allocated portion, because that seems to be the portions that everybody is having an easier time spending, you know? And, uh, but having those projects in place, and, and the plan is that if we can show the state of Texas how much we've impacted with the money that is being put out, maybe in this next legislative session, they can go back and do another, you know, a hundred and fifty million or a hundred and seventy-five million, something to be included, so that they can continue the project, because it is working. And now, John, all of the counties have got projects ongoing.
Are they all of them?
All of them have projects ongoing, all of them have, uh, pretty well spent their allocated dollars, you know? The smaller counties, of course, are waiting for the next call, because they needed the last part to even finish the first project they started. But, uh, we will be looking at, very possibly be attending some hearings in the next month or so in regards to making sure that they do the third call as soon as possible.
And, and Pete, I guess you'll be contacting, uh, the, the different, the public works staff?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, um, a couple of things. We send the spreadsheet to TaxDOT every Friday, we update it every week, and we send it to, um, the Far District and a copy to the Austin headquarters. Um, when we did the application for the second call, we did it in-house, um, and so I think that's what we'll do this time around again, we can just do it in-house. We'll visit with every commissioner, um, and your staff, and we'll put a list together, and then we'll get the engineering department to run the, uh, the estimates and, and work on the maps, and, and, you know, we can even begin to work on the application process, because I'm, I'm sure it's gonna be pretty much similar to what we did the second call.
Yeah, very similar.
And what we'll do, we'll put a little report together, um, on, on the first call, and the impact, you know, that that had, and then on the second call, and the impact that that's gonna have. And then we have the numbers that we sent to TaxDOT last week, and so they can look at what we've done and what, where we need to be at, and, and then they can see the difference, um, at, at least in our county.
Mr. Pulwiler, remember the, the, uh, spreadsheet you produced that we delivered to the Secretary of State's office?
Yes.
TaxDOT would like that, they never received a copy or never, you know, they couldn't find it. So if you could provide them with that spreadsheet, because I think that it very succinctly showed the allocations and costs for each particular item that we were working with.
Yes.
So, if you could provide them with that, that would be appreciated.
And, Pete, my staff already started taking notes on, for the next sample. Uh, motion to acknowledge report?
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, I guess we'll go to number four?
Number five.
Number five. Budget amendments, have you?
Uh, this is two weeks' worth. Uh, one thing that I, I did want to mention is on, uh, page two of the first section of budget amendments, on the boot camp revenue fee account. If you recall, uh, last year, the court had approved, uh, the juvenile probation department is, they actually, I guess, lease out beds, uh, in, in the boot camp to other entities, and, uh, those revenues were to be used for the operations of the boot camp. Um, at the end of, of this fiscal, of this past fiscal year, September thirtieth, they still had seventy-five thousand dollars of unspent, uh, funds that were generated through that program, uh, so they were asking to reallocate it, uh, for supplies within the boot camp, uh, to go those operations, of course, since it was at the end of the year, it drops into, uh, the fund balance, uh, the general fund fund balance, and they're asking to reallocate those funds for their operations.
To reallocate to, to which fund?
To, to the boot camp.
To their current year's fund.
Correct.
To the current fund.
Now, are we gonna have every department come back and request this type of thing?
Well, this, um...
I mean, because theoretically, if we do it for the boot camp, any department in the county can say, "Hey, last year I had this fund balance, can I come back and..."
And it, it has happened in, well, specific instances only, um, whereas we act, this is kind of different, because we are charging, uh, a fee to lease out these beds, which other departments have similar activities to, yes, at the end of the year, it just drops into the fund balance. Uh, the other times that it's happened, it's actually been, um, like the Title V program, where the Meadows gave us funds and it had to be spent within that, and it was reallocated.
But all of these line items already had money in them, right?
Uh, not for this, uh, when this was originally implemented, it, there was a different department number that was created, so they could track those, so that they, it was at zero at the beginning of this fiscal year.
And they need that much in contractual? And that much in...
Uh, these were based on...
I don't know if anybody catches to what I'm...
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, that'll be the...
You know, I mean, it's kind of like increasing the budget already by seventy-five thousand dollars, and we're like a week and, what, maybe a month? You know, we just started.
And they are, yeah, correctly, uh, are currently, uh, continuing that, um, process also. I mean, they still have, I believe, some beds, as they are available, they provide to other entities, so there would be revenues that would be generated this fiscal year.
Right, but those, those revenues could offset the operations.
Correct.
In its totality. I, I don't, maybe I'm off the wall.
No, you're correct.
That's right.
And no one is here to address that?
I don't see anyone. Do we want to increase the budget by seventy-five thousand? That's, that's the bottom line question.
That's the bottom line.
Correct.
When we just approved their budget a month ago.
Correct.
John?
No, I don't.
No?
Okay. Okay, so...
So you wish to approve everything except for that portion of the budget?
That, that was the only exception.
The only exception, uh, the one prior to, to that, uh, on, on the first page, there's between line items within the jail, uh, you know, there were, needed some more, um, actual clothing for the inmates, uh, that they were gonna be ordering all at, at the beginning of this fiscal year. Uh, the parks, there were some, uh, projects that they needed to work, so it's just going between maintenance and...
That's within their budget.
It's all within the budget, and then setting up a grant program, which is actually under juvenile also, that's why it's at zero, that's funding coming from, uh, from the state.
Okay. Is your motion?
Motion to accept with the one exception.
Okay, check.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Minutes for September eighteenth and September nineteenth.
I'm ready for it. Are you ready?
Motion to approve.
To approve.
Motion in seconds. All those in favor say aye on approval of minutes.
Aye.
Motion carries, approval of claims.
Five additional claims, I've put up there for y'all.
You don't have any to add?
Just those five.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Not my abstention on check number zero, zero, one, six, eight, seven, zero, three.
Okay. All those in favor say aye, except for that exception.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, number eight is consideration and authorization to recognize the building department for their hard work in preparation for the rededication of the Dancy Building. John, this is your agenda item?
I, I asked that this be put on to have a formal recognition. I know a lot of us have talked about how, well, not only the, the, uh, maintenance department for the buildings, um, had done transferring everybody over here, getting everybody moved over here, getting ready for the rededication and everything, but I just felt like that formally, we need to recognize the maintenance department and everything they did to make this a showplace of the River Grand Valley, and we do appreciate all the work you did, as formally want to let that be known to the public.
Is Marcelino here?
He's here.
You could stand up.
There wasn't a time that I can recall that anyone had any concerns about anything they asked for him to do or his department to do, they just got it done and kept on about their business. Really appreciate it, Marcelino.
And he does that everywhere, not just with the Dancy Building.
The only problem is a lot of county employees saw this building, and now they say, "We can have that in our office."
They want to be over here.
Thank you very much, Marcelino. Uh, number nine, inter-local agreement between the District Attorney's Office and Willacy County District Attorney's Office for joint cooperation, investigation, assistance in Willacy County investigations and law enforcement. Uh, Juan Salas, how are you doing today, sir?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, we, we had brought this proposal, we had been informally speaking with the District Attorney in Willacy County regarding, uh, we've had a handful of cases where a crime would take place in our county, and yet, property or assets, uh, instrumentality of the crime would be located in Willacy County. Um, in the past, we've been able to, to work together to get those assets disposed and forfeited to the, to the state. Um, but unfortunately, Mr. Mr. Getta is, is, is in financial, having financial hardships in his county. He has one DA for these seizures, which often end up being seized to our county, and he has, I believe the Sheriff's Department has about eight deputies, which means there's only two or three, I believe the news report last night said that they have, at any given time for the entire county, they have two or three individuals. Um, in that, in that vein, we are trying to figure out creative ways of increasing our forfeiture budget, since it's been taxed pretty heav, heavily in, in recent budget, uh, workshops. Um, so we have reached a, an agreement with the Willacy District Attorney, where he has graciously agreed that any investigations in which we were to participate or help with, he would share in the proceeds of those investigations fifty percent. And so that's, that's the proposal that we have for Commissioner's Court, and I welcome any questions that you may have.
This will not compromise our activities in this county, right?
Absolutely not, absolutely not. These are, again, this is, it's a handful of investigations. It's typically when a crime is, is originated in this county, yet the assets are in another county, and that's what, really what we're looking toward. Uh, we, the, the agreement is actually only written, and, and I, I'm trying to anticipate the questions you may have, but the agreement is actually only written for us to go into their county when our criminals, uh, are, are participating, secreting instrumentality properties or, or hiding their, their whereabouts or other things that they do for their criminal purposes. And so we just wanted to have the flexibility to go ahead and prosecute and make sure that we follow through in, in retrieving those assets and bringing them to our county when they have committed crimes in our county.
Like I said, crime doesn't see any borders or any county lines.
And I, I wrote that, and, and unfortunately, we were seeing that, we actually have, the nature of, of the, a lot of the more complex criminal activity that we have, they understand the, the burdens that we have with jurisdiction and venue, and they often do this purposely, where they will buy properties in another county, yet they're, they're committing crimes in our county. And so what we'd like to do is make sure that we can follow those criminals and bring them to justice.
Move to approve.
In other words, you're trying to, uh, make sure the process is in place.
Yes, sir.
Second motion.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Juan Salas.
Thank you.
Number twelve, consideration and possible action regarding parking assignments for elected, appointed, and department heads at parking lot behind the Cameron County Administrative Annex, which is the old, Remy, you have...
Uh, I guess I'll introduce the subject, since the judge, uh, had stepped away. Uh, with the moving of the judge's office and some of the other, uh, elected and appointed officials from the Administrative Annex, um, there have been some parking spaces that had been, uh, reserved that are now, uh, open, and the, uh, current users of the building, such as the tax office, the district attorney's office, and, um, the district clerk's office and the county clerk's office would like to have the parking spaces reassigned. Uh, if I could ask Mr. Segueta to step forward, they have a plan that, that's been drawn up, uh, that sort of allocates the, the spaces that, that were left, uh, behind, that I think meets the needs of, of most of the departments that are going to be, uh, within there, and essentially, um, excuse me to receive that.
Who put the plan together?
Uh, it was drawn up, uh, with the...
Tony.
I know that, yeah, on that sheet, you'll notice that there's some initials down at the bottom, uh, that originally, a, a plan was put together and some minor modifications have occurred to make, uh, accommodations for the district clerk, who has asked that a, a, a slot, a parking spot next to the handicap ramp, uh, she's had knee surgery, and, and she's also getting some office space right where Marcelino was, so it's very adjacent to her, her new space.
Well, since they did this about three months before we moved over here, I mean...
The anticipation of the Dancy Building was, was more than just us.
But you had, you had input, and other people had input.
Yep.
Well, Tony, you probably want the space I was using, 'cause, uh, quite a few times you were using it when I tried to park there.
But, um, the one change you'll notice is that, uh, Mr. Salinas's spot, that, that was originally assigned to him, uh, we're making accommodations for him on the, uh, other side of the building, on the, on the front, uh, on, I think it's Harrison Street, uh, where the, the, where the commissioners of precincts one and two used to park. the Commissioners of Precincts One and Two used to park. Uh, we're working with the Elections Office to set aside two for handicap, two for the Elections Office, one for the Sheriff, and one for, uh, the Veterans Administrator.
Okay, any questions?
Aye.
Any on that?
Y'all fight it out.
All right. So I hear motion to approve the recommended, uh, allocation of slots.
I'm so moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wood. Second by Commissioner Garza. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Did you go straight through four through...
Yeah, we're on, we're on fourteen.
Did you do item number five?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I had several abstentions. I didn't vote, but I wanna go ahead and submit the affidavits anyway, just to make sure. And that's on warrant number zero-zero-one-six-nine-one-nine-zero, warrant number zero-zero-one-six-nine-zero-two-eight, warrant number zero-zero-one-six-eight-seven-five-four, and warrant number zero-zero-one-six-eight, uh, six-four-one, and I'll submit that, though. We're on fourteen.
Okay, thank you. Um, consideration and possible action on rising cost of insurance on county properties? Are you gonna make that presentation?
I can't believe that.
Over the years, the, uh, properties at the, in the parks have been undervalued and, uh, some have not even been covered. I mean, the last year, the, the auditor in our office, it's got with Javier Mendez, and they've gone over and, and included these items in the most recent cost, and it is, it has caused the cost of the insurance to go up significantly. The, uh, other option would be to bid it out, however, all these properties are in the flood zone and, and, and under insured to the, the pool, so we don't know that bidding is gonna provide significant savings, even if we did that. So, we just wanted the Commissioners to be aware of how much the cost had gone up.
Okay.
This is just for the parks?
You don't have any recommendations as to...
Pay the bill.
Where's the money coming from?
Is there any way that this can be brought down? You don't think that that's possible?
Well, we don't think that, we could bid it, and it would probably save a few hundred dollars, but it wouldn't be a significant savings.
Because it's in the pool already.
It's already in the pool. That's the only way you can insure it, so...
God, that's unbelievable.
And this is just the parks' buildings?
Yes.
It's not the rest of the county's properties?
No, it's just those, those we've added to the parks. It's the new construction they built, the pavilions and restrooms and things like that.
So where's the source of funds coming from?
From the parks' budgets.
From the parks?
Yes.
They have it in their budget already?
Yes, they do.
Allocated?
Yes.
Move to acknowledge important.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Garza. Second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by standing aye. Aye.
Motion carries.
Seventeen, uh, consideration, um, and possible approval of change order to the Cameron County Harmonian Annex Building for various site modifications within the budgeted allowances and betterment funds.
Judge, Commissioner, you have the backup, um, in your agenda packet, um, for this change order. Basically, what we're doing is deleting a driveway on Han Road, we're adding a parking lot, um, we're, the big item is the new fire line and, and fire hydrant that is being required, um, and then we're adding a sidewalk along, uh, Wilson Road. And the funding that we're utilizing is, um, uh, we've got a betterment fund and an MEP allowance, uh, that will cover the, um, additional costs for this change order. Uh, Mr. Mojica from the architects in the audience, if there's any technical questions?
I just have one question. How could we be issued a building permit and not be told about the fire line?
That, that item came as a result of the permitting process. Through the permitting process, when the contractor submitted his documents for permitting, it goes through the Fire Marshal's office. The Fire Marshal then gave his comments, and that's where all, that stemmed this whole, this generated this whole, this whole, uh, effort here. So they granted the permit with the understanding that we were gonna provide this as part of the requirement, and that's what we're trying to come before you with this.
Under the condition that this would take place?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And, and the issue that we have here, the numbers are what they are because of the distance. If you recall, we had to move the building back to give us enough, uh, cars we could stack for the, for the tax office, and then they also, we have to loop it back. That's a requirement also by the Fire Department. And so we're connecting it back to Han Road, and as you recall, the property is fairly long until you can actually get to Han Road. So the distances are long because of that. That's where the numbers are.
Are we eliminating the, the driveway to Han Road?
Yes, sir. That, that is not your property.
That's not our property?
No, sir.
That, we found out that between those houses...
Exactly.
That property belonged to those two homeowners.
Exactly. Exactly.
I think, uh, Mr. Enalhosa had been trying to negotiate with them to see if we could get the access, but I think ultimately it wasn't successful. And so we've, we've asked them to include, uh, plans so that that road could be extended to the, I guess, north or south, up the road, and then turn back into hand on the, on the county property.
So it'll still be in Han Road?
It'll, it, not on this part of the property, but it'll be able...
But later, we could, through our department, go in there and build a, a road.
Exactly. And if you look, the contractor gave us back that amount, that, that was an alternate prize.
Right.
That whole money, those monies were given back to us in the credit item, the first-line item there.
Now, are you initial, uh, on the agenda items? Should we have NA under legal, Mr. Burst? Not applicable? I, I don't have a check. I don't have anything there. It's just a blank. So it didn't have to go to legal?
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Well, you're so far away.
Well, why, why doesn't the sound system pick this up?
Does he have a speaker on it?
Well, he has it. He needs to pull it down.
Seventeen?
Excuse me?
You were asking about seventeen?
Yes, seventeen. Is that an NA for you, not applicable, or...
I'm sorry.
Um, the, when we originally received the packet, it hadn't been reviewed by legal, but we did send it to the Legal Department. Um, Ms. Jeffries, uh, signed on the top cop, copy which goes to the, the County Clerk's Office, so it has been, uh, reviewed by his department. And it, it's just that we're not showing that on the rest of the package, and I apologize.
Well, that's what I was referring to. Thank you.
Did, did we move out the, what's the outcome on space allocation changes over there? I mean, can you, can we get a report? I know there've been some changes that have occurred.
Yes, sir.
You know, I mean, do any of those come before this body?
Uh, but certainly can.
I mean, we've, we've had, the plans of the building have changed, right?
Uh, not really. The, if you recall, there's, we had a space allocation for, excuse me, uh, space allocation for the dignitary is what we called it, 'cause we weren't sure who was gonna be in there. And it was actually two spaces.
Well, we knew who was gonna be there. It was gonna be the state rep.
Right, and, and we had a space for secretary and a dignitary as well. Since then, there's been a request for a DA to actually utilize one of those spaces, and that can easily be done by adding a door to the lobby and closing off the, the pass way between these two offices.
Okay, and that's not a change order?
I'm sorry?
That's not a change order?
But that hasn't occurred yet.
Yes.
It hasn't occurred yet?
It hasn't come before you.
No, essentially, we, we were looking for, for the space at the request of the DA's office. We finally came to where we think we can accommodate him without impacting, you know, the budget or the, the rest of the use of the building, and then once he was prepared how much it might cost, that proposal was gonna be brought to the court to let you all decide whether you wanted to do it.
Okay, so that's not at all yet here?
No, sir. This is, what's before you now is strictly exterior. It's all sidewalk.
Okay.
Another modification that will be forthcoming is, uh, the deletion of the holding cells, uh, where they are now being converted into a restroom and a shower. And, uh, that'll be forthcoming, probably around the same time as the revised plan for the DA's office.
Okay.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Garza. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tom Irony. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by standing aye. Aye. I oppose. Motion carries. Eighteen, consideration authorization for a report from Cameron County Solid Waste Enforcement Division regarding the collection scheduled for household trash and brush pickup by Red River Service Corporation.
Judge, I'm gonna ask John to come up here and, uh, briefly give a report to the court on, uh, the, um, operation of the solid waste with Red River. Uh, the, look at the schedule for the garbage collection, for the brush collection, inform me all of the number of complaints that we're receiving on a daily basis, uh, the number of calls that we're receiving daily, uh, the time it's taking Red River to answer the complaints to our satisfaction, um, and then, uh, pass out again a handout on the schedules that they've implemented both for brush and garbage collection. Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. I gave, I handed you a memo and, um, a schedule. The memo is basically, um, an overview or a snapshot of Cameron County Solid Waste Disposal Utility. And, um, I stated here that the day-to-day operations are in day-to-day collection, garbage collection, program is working, uh, effectively and efficiently. I listed, uh, some of the areas that have improved. I also listed some of the areas that need improvement, and that, um, I finished the, the memo by stating that the purpose of the program was to reduce illegal dumping and to improve the health and safety of Cameron County residents, and I believe, and that we've accomplished this goal. Um, I'm gonna go over the schedule, and I can answer any questions you may have regarding both the schedule.
My question is, are they following the schedule?
Uh...
I mean, in regards to the solid waste collection, we have not had too many complaints on. On the billing, yes, but on the solid waste collection, no. They're there picking it up weekly, you know, very few complaints of that not occurring. When we've had one or two, they've gone back and picked it up fairly quickly. On the brush and bulky waste, we have had major complaints.
Okay. Um, the, the schedule hasn't changed. The schedule was the same. They've made some minor adjustments when necessary, o- over time, but as far as, um, getting back to your question on the brush and, and bulky waste collection schedule, there is a little problem in that area, and the problem the Red River's having is when the drivers are out there to pick up the brush or the bulky items, sometimes they have, um, a, a problem identifying if that brush belongs to a Red River customer. Sometimes they, they can't see the, the container, the Red River container. So sometimes what happens is they'll, they'll miss that resident, the resident calls in and verify that, that customer was, or that resident was a Red River customer. Then they go back out there and, and pick up the brush. Now, um, it, that generates obviously a complaint, but it's, it's rectified right away. But what they, what they wanna do is, they wanna change, uh, the schedule, the brush and bulky schedule, to, to avoid that problem. What they wanna do now is, when they pick up the regular household garbage, residential garbage, they wanna follow it with the brush truck, so that that doesn't happen. But that's gonna require...
But you know, the complaint that I got that brought this agenda to the forefront was a one-street neighborhood that had had their brush there for more than sixty days, waiting for that week two to come by, okay? And I know that Marty in my office called over, and we didn't call your office, we called Red River, and, uh, there's been some changes where you talk to people over there, you know, now there's not the same folks there. And, you know, we kept constantly being told, "They'll be there tomorrow, they'll be there tomorrow, they'll be there tomorrow," and, you know, it was gone this morning, I will say, but this has been ongoing for over sixty days. And this is just one neighborhood where the guy is persistently calling me on a daily basis, saying, "They haven't come, they haven't come, they haven't come," you know? And folks put their, their brush on the street because they know week two, they're gonna be coming by, and it just stays there.
Uh, Commissioner, well, that shouldn't happen. Um, if those calls come to me or to my office, I can take care of those right away. I hadn't heard of that.
Yeah, I mean, this was ongoing?
The two calls that I got, uh, and it was, because I, I wanted follow-up to know, number one, if it had been taken care of or not, but I called your office and you handled it. And it, they were taken care of, but that was a problem. They, uh, the people picking up the brush weren't sure if those people were paid up because they didn't see the container with a green sticker.
That's correct.
So...
Yeah. And, and the worst part is that whole neighborhood, it was a neighborhood that was being serviced by a totally different entity, and they've all changed to it, and they wanna be serviced by them, but they want, you know, they wanna know that week two or whatever, they can put out stuff and they'll get picked up.
Yeah, I mean, I think you need to, um, we need to be on top of them, and I think the Commissioners need to call John to have John follow up on it, because when I have problems, that's who I call, you know? When I get calls, that's who I call, and it's getting, it gets taken care of. What happens, what has happened in the past was, in my experience, is that they'll go, "All right, all right, all right, all right," and then boom, they lag behind for one month. Something will happen that will cause them to, they'll, they'll, they'll lag behind a couple of weeks or a month on the, on the, uh, brush collection. And then we call, and then they, they start up again. And that's my job, to call and to get them straight, and, and I don't have a problem doing that. But the other problem that is out there is that, i- is that you have that problem that we just now mentioned that causes a lot of, of brush and bulky items to build up, and they need to come and pick it up and fix the problem, and then they're responsible, they are the ones that are responsible for the large, um, amount of brush that has accumulated because they didn't pick it up. But then there's also situations sometimes where they, where they'll put out brush much more than, than what they're allowed to put out, and then they mix in stuff, and that stuff that mixes in can't be picked up, and so they skip it, you know? And then the people get angry, and they, they call us, and then we call them, and, and then they say, "Well, you know, Judge, you know, we, we can't be picking up stuff that's got trash and brush mixed in together." And, and, yeah, they throw in things that they're not supposed to throw in. And so that, that, you know, people just, I think that's a part of an educational program that eventually, I mean, look, we've had this program in place for eighteen months, you know, we've been working out the kinks. I talked to, to, uh, the Public Works Assistant City Manager of Brownsville, Mr. Ayala, the other day, and asked him, you know, "How long have you had your BFI contract?" He said, "Like six or seven years." I said, "Have you all worked out all the kinks?" He says, "No, we still have issues that we're constantly dealing with, with them." The other thing that we, there is a problem is that, again, with respect to the bulky items, they'll put out a bunch of bulky items, you know, at one time, and they're not, I think they're entitled to one big thing at, at a month, and, and you see that as a problem. But the long and the short of it is that, you know, as we're working out the kinks, you know, you, we, we have significantly less trash being dumped in the rural areas than we had before. Um, there's still stuff going on. The primary problem that I see in the rural areas, and this is an issue that we have to address with respect to illegal dumping, um, at some point, through, I believe, our, our, our building code, building, uh, program that we've got, is that there's people who are dumping construction materials out in the rural areas. That is where I'm seeing big problems. That's not addressed through the rural trash collection program because we don't, it's really not designed to deal with that issue, but I'm seeing like, you know, roofing materials, you know, dumped on Old Alice Road, uh, or on Old Port Isabel Road that goes between Highway one hundred. You know, that kinda stuff you're seeing continuously, and we really need to sit down and figure out how we're addressing that. I mean, I think, I thought that at some point, we were gonna come up with a plan that required some kind of a bond to be paid at the time that they took out their building permit so that we could see tipping fees paid for construction materials, uh, on a regular basis, so that when you, when, when they go to collect their bond, they gotta present their tipping fee receipts to the, uh, Building Inspection Department, and you can see based upon the building permit that was taken out, what in fact was, uh, uh, paid for, and you'll know muscle manuals whether or not these two things match. And, and that's really where we really need to address this issue.
We, we have a requirement that the contractor or whoever gets the building permit, before we issue the, uh, the occupancy permit, they have to bring proof that they legally disposed of the...
Okay. Is that a city requirement, too? Is that a city requirement, too? Because maybe what's happening is that some of these, some of it is construction going on in the city and then dumping in the rural area. In other words, where we don't have any control of. That's something we need to look at, because-
All looking to different cities and counties to have that.
Maybe we need to sit down-
We've had that for like two years.
Yeah. We need to sit down and talk about that, because that is where I see the big problem, is construction materials, primarily like roofing materials that are dumped out there that-
But also, judges, in the Santa Rosa, La Feria area, with Constable Diaz has done a good job of trying to keep that under control. But a lot of the, evidently, they put in carpeting, and so they dump the old carpeting as well as a padding and all that. That's what we have found a lot of.
And we have a grant with the Sheriff's Department and people that are supposed to be working and are working on some of those illegal dump sites, try to identify who is doing it, and then bring it back to them, besides finding them, having them clean it up and this type of thing. It's a grant that probably some additional emphasis needs to be put on, because we are having the problem. It is expensive to dump building material, especially roofing materials, very heavy, carpet's very heavy. It costs a lot to dump it, and you're going to find people continuing to try to illegally dump it, and they need to be held to account of.
You know, I just want to make sure that the schedule is going to be the same, so that we'll know what to tell folks.
Yes, Commissioner.
And I also indirectly heard that they were going to do some bins for tires.
Yes.
Is that announcement going to be coming soon, or?
That's going to happen in December.
In December?
They're going to send out a flyer, along with this next statement, stating the locations and the dates and the times.
Could we be kind of forewarned as a commissioner's court, so that we'll know?
If we get phone calls.
You know?
Yes, I'll forward that information to you. I know it's set up for December. I don't have, it's still in the planning stages. I don't know what the dates are, but I'll get that information to you.
Because I know that that would be very helpful, because we encounter tires on a very regular basis.
Yes, Commissioner.
And, you know, we can fill up the bin just from the Pete's Warehouse back there.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge report?
So, second.
Motion, my Commissioner Wood, second, my Commissioner Tamani, for a discussion. All those in favor, signify by state and I.
Thank you, John.
I'll oppose, motion carries. All right, consent items and the travel items, that's items 19 through 40, and item 41, there's a request by Legal to table item number 21, and-
Pass it.
Oh, no, he's withdrawing his request to table.
Subject to legal approval.
Well, say it loud enough.
Message subject to legal approval.
Okay, all right. Okay, any questions, concerns, comments, complaints on any of the consent and travel items? Yeah, Michael?
Can you get closer? We can't hear.
Items 40K and B, wondering if the court would like to select committees for those two?
You want to select what, Mike?
Committees, evaluation committees.
What number was that, I'm sorry?
Forty A and B. Do we need it?
Do we have to have a committee?
No, sir.
Can you just give us a recommendation on both of those two?
Yeah, certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
An item number 20, is there a recommendation on that? A name associated with this?
PSI.
I'm sorry?
It's PSI.
Okay, because it's not in the packet.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Or at least not in my packet.
Yes, it's PSI.
Okay, PSI.
All right. David?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, David.
On number 25, I know Yvette is here, are there any discussions occurring at all to provide, other than the type of services that this MOU has in place for the residents of Port Isabel and the Laguna Madre area by the community health clinic?
Yes, we talked to Paula about this, as you know, you asked me about this a year ago.
Right.
And since then, we've been trying to get her to provide some of the primary services out there. She wanted to start with this MOU, and from there, expand on the services as well. There's also some talk about maybe some services to be provided through the Valley Health Service District as well. So, yes, in answer to your question-
Well, the Health Services District is not providing services right now.
No, but-
To anyone.
But she's developing a proposal to help fund some of the services to be provided at the Father O'Brien Clinic.
As I understood it, Yvette, she said this was like phase one.
Yes, ma'am.
And our discussions.
Yes, Commissioner, this is, she wanted to start with this MOU first, and then from there, expand onto some of the other services.
Because, you know, there were other services that used to be provided there that would probably be very helpful to the community if we could bring them back.
I agree. We'll continue to try and work with Brownsville Community Health Center to see if they can provide some of those services out there again.
Yvette, I have a question.
What item were you also?
Twenty-five. Just trying to bring some more service. And under paragraph four, D, item D, under paragraph four, paragraph D, it indicates that the initial program shall begin January 106. Is that it?
That's not a typo, Commissioner. Legal did ask us to make that a more recent time period, however, Brownsville Community Health Center wanted for the time period to stay like that, for their funding purposes, to show that they have been providing services at the Father O'Brien Clinic, so they wanted some backup to that. Paula said that if this was a problem for the court, then she'd be more than happy to come next week, and if we could just table the item.
I'm not sure it's a problem. I'm just wondering why, if we started this nine, 10 months ago, why it's just now getting to our table.
Originally, when the volunteer physician was at the Father O'Brien Clinic, providing volunteer prenatal services, he was a volunteer physician. Then at some point, he became an employee of Brownsville Community Health Center. We were advised that this happened, because we would not have had any knowledge unless the physician had told us. We were advised of this, I believe, in May, and Ms. Gomez said that she would work on the MOU to give to us, because she wanted a more formal agreement. And after that, I believe, we met with Commissioner Tamani, Mark Yates, in September, along with Paula Gomez, and this is a result of that meeting.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Do I hear a motion to approve the consent and travel items?
Oh, I had-
With the change?
I had another one. Okay, go ahead. One question. Item 19. According to the backup material I have here, currently, I think the attorney in question on this contract is being paid $5,500 a month, and they're looking at $6,000 per month now, which I understand does bring him in line with some of the other attorneys and some of the other courts. However, that's an increase of 9% in one fell swoop. We're looking at, I think maybe sometime, we may want to start looking at in-house having public defenders as opposed to contracting out, because it's starting to get pretty expensive with all the contracts we have with attorneys, $72,000 a year per attorney or per court starts to get, to be a lot of money.
I think you're absolutely right, Commissioner. I mean, really, we really need to sit down and figure out whether or not this is really the right way to go, whether this contracting business has gotten to the point where the amount that we're spending is more than, or is equal to what we would be spending on a public defender system. And so I agree that we need to get this issue, study it, and come up with a structure that will work. And especially right now, that we've got, you know, issues with respect to the office space and so forth, that we need to decide at the courthouse, since we've moved out. You know, now's the time to make a decision on this, because we may need to allocate some of that space for a public defender's office right there at the courthouse. So, I agree, and I promise you-
And three years ago-
We'll get on this right away.
After I came in, I recall looking at these about three years ago, and at that time, we were, we were understanding that it was less expensive to contract an attorney than it was to appoint one at every case that needed to be appointed. And we went along with that provision, but since then, now we've gone basically from something like $60,000 a year to $72,000 a year per contract attorney.
Yeah, and one of the, and I think that it depends upon how you structure the program ultimately, and so, you know, one of the things we've talked about for a while is putting a court up there next to the jail to handle all those people who are coming out of the jail. And it may be that having that set up that way, with a public defender's office there to handle all the litigation that is court-appointed litigation at that one location, will allow us to do this more efficiently, because everybody's in one place, the cases are moving through real quick, you've got, you know, one set of public defenders coming in, representing multiple defendants, and we could probably do it for the amount of money that we're currently allocating that way, and probably would provide as effective or more effective representation for the folks. So, that's something we're going to, we're going to look at, now that we've got to deal with these issues of space, deal with these issues of what we're going to do with the jail, and the funding requests, the funding for possibly new construction out there, and then just put together a package where we're going to get it all done all at one time.
Judge, in regards to setting up a department like that, would it be under any other department, or would it be a totally separate department, like public defenders?
I mean, I would think that a public defender's office would have to be under the jurisdiction of district courts, because they appoint indigent defendants as it is, and so they would be essentially appointing a team of people to represent, that would be working full-time as county employees, to be representing indigent persons in their courts. So, the way I see it is, it would be under the counsel of judges, the district and county court of law judges.
No, we have full-time prosecutors that make half this much money. I mean, they're new, they've just come out of law school, but they're working-
Some of them are not.
-10, 12 hours a day, and some of them are not. Some of them have been there for years and have lots of experience. And it seems to me like-
I think it's time for us to do this, and it has to be all in conjunction with all these other things that we're going to be doing with respect to the jails. And I really think it's time for us to start moving in the direction of putting together a courtroom next to the jail, so.
I would appreciate taking number 19 out of order or out of the grouping.
Okay. Okay, let's vote on number 19. Consideration possible approval of legal service contract without further ado for the 130th District Court. Do I hear a motion to approve that by Commissioner?
Second.
That's the second, my Commissioner Tamani, for a discussion. All those in favor, signify by state and I. I'll oppose.
No.
Motion carries. Items 20 through 40 and item 41, do I hear a motion to approve with those modifications?
Some of-
Motion by Commissioner Tamani, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it, but I'll have, I had some questions, but I'll just visit with the individuals later.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Also, all those in favor, signify by state and I. I'll oppose, motion carries. Motion to go on executive session. Motion, my Commissioner Tamani, second, my Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by state and I. I'll oppose, motion carries. We're now in executive session pursuant to VTC government code section 551.072, 551.0712, 551.0711A and 2. All those in favor, signify by state and I. I'll oppose, motion carries. Item number 43A, possible action on confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning issues relating to possible acquisition of real property for the Dancy Building Renovation Project. Motion to authorize the Pete Sepulveda's office to begin discussions with the BISD to acquire certain properties close to the Dancy Building.
So move.
Motion, my Commissioner Wood, second, my Commissioner Tamani, for a discussion. All those in favor, signify by state and I. I, both motion carries. With respect to 43A, 43B and 43C, the possible action on the right-of-way acquisition for the Westboro Project, which is B, and right-of-way acquisition on easement owned by Cameron County at Free Trail Trade Bridge, which is C. Motion to table?
So move.
Motion, my Commissioner Wood, second, my Commissioner Tamani, for a discussion. All those in favor, signify by state and I. I, both motion carries. Item number 43D, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning the right-of-way for Florida de Mayo Road. Motion to authorize Pete Sepulveda to begin discussions with the property, to file, to make a-
Counterproposal.
Proposal to the Commissioner's Court for a counterproposal on the acquisition of certain tract of land owned by-
Mr. Horn.
Mr. Horn.
Two to your honor.
For the Florida de Mayo.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner. That's the second, my Commissioner Tamani, for a discussion. All those in favor, signify by state and I. I, both motion carries. Item number 43E, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel 1674 Primeta Road in the precinct four area. Motion to authorize the acquisition of the property for the sum of $1,487.
So move.
Second.
Motion, my Commissioner Tamani, second, my Commissioner Garza, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by state and I. I, both motion carries. Item number 43F, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel 24 Primeta Road in precinct four area. Motion to authorize the acquisition of the property for the sum of $909.
So move.
Motion, my Commissioner Tamani, second, my Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by state and I. I, both motion carries. Item number 43G, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel 44 FM 106 General Brent Road in the precinct number three area. Motion to authorize the acquisition of property for the sum of $3,185.
So move.
Second.
Motion, my Commissioner Wood, second, my Commissioner Garza, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by state and I. I, both motion carries. Item number 43H, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning the acquisition of parcel 166 Primeta Road in the precinct number four area. Motion to authorize the acquisition of the property for the sum of $2,738.
So move.
Motion, my Commissioner, Tamani, second, my Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by state and I. I, both motion carries. Item number 43I, possible action on confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning Red River Solid Waste Collection Contract about the issue of non-compliance or default on the matter which due the attorney to the governmental body and the text to disbar rules of professional conduct to state by text clearly conflicts with this chapter. Motion to acknowledge report of Cameron County Commissioners' Court Counsel, and to direct him to proceed as discussed in executive session.
So move. Not by abstention.
Motion by Commissioner Garza, second, my Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by state and I. I, both motion carries. Commissioner Tamani did not participate in discussion, was not in executive session, and she abstained. Item number 43J, possible action on confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning a conveyance of land to Cameron County Drainage District Number Three for purpose of drainage at Los Indios Bridge site. Motion to allow for the conveyance of land to Cameron County Drainage District Number Three. In exchange for what?
That's the next item.
That's the next item. I move to approve, Judge.
Second.
Motion, by Commissioner Wood, second, by Commissioner Garza, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by state and I. I, both motion carries. 43GK, possible action on confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning a conveyance of land to harvest for purpose of drainage at Los Indios Bridge site.
So move.
Second.
Okay, motion, my Commissioner Garza, second, my Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by state and I. I, both motion carries. Let me clarify, we're conveying land to both of these people, and what are we getting in return for most of these things?
Drainage easement.
On the drainage easement?
There's a lot of drainage, this is three to twelve, the drainage pool is, is under-
So we get the drainage out of it?
Right.
Okay. That's what we get, that's the consideration? Yes? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
And some land.
And we're getting some land as well?
We're getting some land also.
Okay. Does it say that in the, in what we're-
In the deeds.
We're getting about 10 acres for giving up seven.
So the conveyance, the quit-pro quo for the conveyance is included in the, in all the legal documents? All right. I'm sorry, I just-
We're giving up seven and getting 10, and plus, we're getting the drainage out of it.
Okay, I just wanted to put that on the record.
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor, signify by state and I. I, both motion carries. Item number 43L, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning the acquisition of parcel 17 for FM 106 General Brent Road in the precinct number three area. Motion to authorize the acquisition of property for the sum of $3,130.
So move.
Motion, my Commissioner Wood, second, my Commissioner Tamani, for a discussion. All those in favor, signify by state and I. I, both motion carries. 43M, possible action on confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning the Civil Service Commission Appeal of Isabel Castillo. Motion, motion to acknowledge report of counsel?
So move. Second.
Motion, my Commissioner Garza, second, my Commissioner Tamani, for a discussion. All those in favor, signify by state and I. I, both motion carries. Item number 43N, possible action on confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning Correia Gonzalez and Sonia Gonzalez versus Cameron County Jesus Villanueva individually and in his official capacity. Civil action number 05278 for discussion of status of case. Motion to authorize the legal counsel to retain an expert on the issue of causation.
Is that what?
If necessary.
So move.
Second.
So move.
Motion, my Commissioner Wood, motion, my Commissioner Garza, second, my Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by state and I. I, both motion carries. Item number 43O, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning a request from Laguna Madre Water District to temporarily use county property at Andy Bowie Park for seawater desalination pilot project, and just note my not being present at the meeting and at the discussion, so.
Move to proceed with the license agreement to be presented to the court at a later date for official approval.